So it's in the driver's.
It's right. Yeah, right there.
Brenda, you just want to wait a few minutes?
Yes. Um, I did receive a phone call and the fog is so bad. Going to be just, our board chair will be a few minutes late.
So everybody knows. We're recording now, so they don't.
Okay. Can we not record?
Well, good, but it doesn't matter. Tim, that application is in now.
Check your email and see notes there. I just sent it by my phone.
She says she was close, Brenda?
Yep.
Yes, I didn't say that. And thank you for creating the agenda.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Yeah, it's hotter.
I have, I got two unit bottles. I had a full one. I give them.
Sweater over here once. Just for that same reason. But it was too warm, so. Used it up.
Hi.
Hi.
We're on, we're live.
Did you start the meeting?
No.
It's really foggy out there.
Yes.
I apologize. Not going to tell you what I did. I already did.
You already did.
Ended up in Roscommon County. Like, okay, this is not okay.
Two exits.
Hi. No, no, see.
Okay.
All right, let's call the meeting in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Jenny David. Here. Roger Mahew. Charles Wiltse. Friend of Simmons. Yes. Craig Scott.
Here.
Um, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to add, probably.
I'd like to add.
Jay, Jay, um, meeting schedules. And talk a little bit about that.
We have another hard copy of the agenda. I only have the last page. I have a hard copy of it. You'd like to add what? What's that?
Um, meeting schedule.
And where?
Um, it's probably at Jay, Jay, just before new business, I guess, or at the end of, uh, the consent agenda.
Any other additions or corrections?
No, I'll make motion to approve the agenda would change.
We have a motion with Commissioner Scott.
A support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltse. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Are there any?
I don't know. I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Um, item four, review of minutes. January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion to accept them as presented.
We have a motion with Commissioner Scott.
Second.
Support from Mr. Mahew. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four B, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I'll move to the, accept them as presented.
Motion for Commissioner Scott. Support from Commissioner Mahew. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three C, post-session meeting minutes from January eighteenth.
Motion to accept this presented.
I'll second.
Motion for Commissioner Scott. Support from Commissioner Wiltse. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, public comment and agenda item manners. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Correspondence? Um, I don't think there was any. Not that I seen on my, I bet. Uh, consent agenda. What are you guys thinking? What are your thoughts?
In our discussions last week that we had, but we're going to have to take some of these.
So it's take each one.
One individually?
Yep.
Okay, item seven A, resolution to approve Homeland Security Grant Program expenditures for the Region Three Emergency Management Certain Volunteer Training Conference.
That I will make a motion to accept that resolution.
Motion with Commissioner Scott.
I will second that.
Support from Commissioner Wiltse. Um, any further discussion on that? And that is for the forty-five hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one hundred percent reimbursable. Mr. Bowers gave us a pretty good.
I think Mr. Bowers explained it very well to us.
Agreed. Can we have a roll call on that? Roger Mahew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes, item seven B, resolution of intent to apply for state formal operating assistance for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Um, I'm going to read this since there was some uh, discussion on the numbers last week. This resolution is sponsored by Oma Transit Director Ray Blamer Pursuit to Act Fifty-One of the Public Act of nineteen eighty-one. It is necessary for the Board of Commissioners to formally approve a fiscal year twenty twenty-five Oklahoma Transit Budget with total estimated expensive of one million one hundred eighty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and to name an official representative of the county. Approval of the resolution will satisfy requirements of Act Fifty-One and name Transit Director Ray Blamer as Oklahoma County Representative.
Excellent. My motion, we accept this resolution.
Motion with Commissioner Wiltse. Is there support on this?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Discussion? Tim, do you have anything to add to that?
No, it's routine. You do these every, every January.
Transit committee is good with it.
Absolutely.
Yes. You guys met this past week, correct?
Yeah, we had a meeting last Thursday. It was discussed. Yeah, we're all, all good.
Hey, uh, Mr. Blamer, I thought I saw him here. Anything you want to say?
No, I'm going to stick around for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, roll call vote. Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Item seven C, resolution to authorize employee promotion. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. The fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget includes a position allocation list which limits the number of permanent employees who can be employed in all departments, offices, and the courts. Because of the known budget constraints, the Board of Commissioners determines that position vacated during the fiscal year shall not be filled prior to review and approval of the board. Approval of the resolution will affirm the recommendation of Sheriff Gilbert to promote a corrections officer to fill a vacant corrections sergeant position.
Would anybody like to entertain a motion? Would anybody like to entertain a motion?
Yeah.
We have a motion with Commissioner Mahew. Do we have support?
If I support it, can I support it for conversation?
Do you support this motion? And then we'll open it up for discussion.
I like to open it for discussion.
So are you supporting it?
Um.
That is what you would do.
That's the only way you can talk about it.
So we can talk.
We have a motion with Commissioner Mahew with support from Commissioner Wiltse. Discussion?
Um, I know for me, you know, this has been a topic on and off for a while now. It was obviously a really hard decision for us. We had to make the layoffs to the corrections and to the sheriff department. So I put a lot of time into this, thought into it. Really with, with the numbers that we have down right now in the jail, with the amount of corrections officers to the sergeants. Again, a lot of, lot of thought into this and, uh, I, um, I'm not in favor of this anymore.
Any other discussion? Mr. Simmons?
I agree with, um, Commissioner Wiltse. Not in favor either. This is almost like, um, what took place with another situation as far as the Tahoe goes. Stuff was done before it's approved, and I feel the same way about this, and we don't have the money. That's why what happened in January happened in, I mean, I should say October, happened in October. Because of the budget.
When we passed the budget on, may I ask?
Go ahead.
When we passed the budget, I, I made the statement that you can pass it today, Thursday, and then Monday, if you need to change it, you can change it.
I understand that.
We're four months into the budget now.
I know.
We have an opportunity to save a little bit of money. It's not much. We're not affecting any personnel numbers. We're not laying anybody else off. Not having to add anybody. I think we can save a few dollars.
What do you mean by that, Mr.?
Well, we asked, are they eliminating any people? No, they're not. And they're not hiring any duty to replace. So the number of people are still the same.
Yes.
It's duties. It's duties. You're just going to have to share, they're, have to share duties amongst others, you know?
Understand, but.
Uh, it's a promotion. It's going to be a raise. It's going to be more money.
And I understand that.
I'm just saying we have not, we need to save it.
But, yeah, my question is, is the person that was in that position before, did he have less seniority than the guy that's still there? You understand what I'm saying?
Well, I, I don't know about that.
No, but I'm just asking. I mean, if he was, he was a man in administration. Um, evidently that fourth.
Well, this is all.
Butt, Butt Sergeant was, was, was the one that was laid off, had less seniority than the one that's there now?
No, 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 no. I think this, this is all, from what I understand, Lieutenant Oger retired.
Yep.
Sergeant, Sergeant Tom Howard went up to lieutenant. Then they moved somebody else from a sergeant position to a staff sergeant position and leaving this position open. Nobody was laid off out of sergeant position.
I see.
Do you guys want to add anything to that?
We have a corrector. Right.
What I, what I asked for was a staffing ratio, which is what they do very frequently at my office. Um, so I, I did request that information and, and currently there's one supervisor for, for, uh, every two point six corrections officers. So, um, I, I think with the current, with, with, uh, the current staffing, I, I don't, I, I'm also, and, and I haven't strayed from that. I don't feel like, uh, this is needed at this time, um, as far as related to the budget, as far as looking at the staffing ratios. Um, if I understand this correctly, there's five supervisors and thirteen corrections officers. Um, so as of right now, with all them layoffs that we recently did, I just cannot support this. Um, so, uh, any further discussion? Roll call vote. Brenda Simmons.
No.
Craig Scott.
No.
Jenny David.
No.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltse.
No.
Item seventy, resolution to appoint members to the Special Housing Advisory Committee. These resolutions are sponsored by the Committee of the Whole on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. The Board of Commissioners' approval of Resolution twenty-three dash one six seven to establish a special housing advisory committee as permitted under Section eight point four of the Board of Commissioners' Rules of Procedure. Membership of the, membership on the committee is to consist of representatives from Oklahoma County, the City of West Branch, Oklahoma Township, West Branch Township, and the Oklahoma County Economic Development Corporation to be appointed by majority vote of the Board of Commissioners. Separate resolutions are presented for each of the eight candidates. If approved, each candidate will be appointed to a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Candidates are as follows. Commissioner Charles Wiltse representing the Board of Commissioners, John Donzer representing the City of West Branch, Yvonne DeRosa representing the Oklahoma Township, Sean Gilbert rep, representing West Branch Township, Rob Griffin representing West Branch Township, Penny Paya representing the Economic Development Corporation, Nancy Tyree representing Oklahoma Township, and Kathy Zimmerman representing the City of West Branch.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for the entire slate.
How does that work?
We have a, we have a motion right now on the table. Um, we may have to amend that motion, but for right now, we have a motion for this, this current one from Commissioner Scott. Is there anybody that would like to support this?
I just have a, a question. I, possible conflict of interest. I should have probably brought that up earlier. I mean, I'm, I'm on here.
So right now, I'm going to support that, and then let's open this for discussion.
Um, that would be no more of a conflict from what committees are assigned on organizational meetings. So I, I would suggest you don't have a conflict.
Oh, okay.
Unless you don't want to serve, and then.
No, I definitely want to, I definitely want to serve.
So we have a motion right now, um, with support. I, I guess I, I read the email, um, from Mr. Donzer. Can you elaborate?
Yeah, there was, I think, a misunderstanding when we first talked about this in December. I think Mr. Donzer thought that each of the communities would be appointing a person to this group. And when we originally discussed this at the manager level, if you will, um, we talked about forming, uh, well, putting together an interlocal agreement and forming a committee that was in fact appointed in that way. That's kind of cumbersome and awkward because that would mean each of our communities that are listed there would have to pass the resolution and agree to it. And it's a big formal contract. The attorney would be involved. Uh, and that would be probably ninety days out. This way, you are able to do that as a board to appoint committees, just like you have a transit budget and some of the other standing committees that you have and meet that same goal. So you've got representatives from the communities that we talked about, but it gets, gets us a much more efficient, uh, committee. I mean, you literally could be up and running if you approve this, could be up and running tomorrow uh, versus waiting, uh, for interlocal agreements to clear and, um, just having each body appoint its own person and all that process. So it's just a more efficient way of doing it. I think you get the same thing accomplished. Uh, the only, uh, downside is because it's a standing committee, everybody's term would expire at the end of the year, and then when the new board is seated in January, they would be hopefully reappointed for the term of that board. Other than that, this, I think, is far more efficient approach.
I'm gonna, I, I read Mr. Donzer's email and, and I agreed with it though. Um, they kind of wanted to represent, they, I guess they wanted a, a voice in who they wanted on this board. Um,
Well, these candidates, I think, came from those communities.
But to me, from his email, maybe I misunderstood it. There were some concerns with, with some names or, or in, in, I, I shouldn't, maybe there was other individuals, interest, I guess I, that's what I got out of it, is they kind of had their own ideas. Um, they didn't think that we, which I guess these individuals did get on and apply for, or fill out the application for this position, but I felt like his email that they wanted more of a voice in this, these specific areas. Did you guys have an opportunity to read his email?
I did, and I even went to the city meeting. I, I don't see a problem here. This, the reason I'm saying the, the whole res, the resolution, you have three communities here. There's two representatives from each community that fulfills that, one from the E, EDC, and then, of course, Commissioner Wiltse from the commission. I think it's evenly spread. I don't see anybody uh, that stands out to me to be a problem. It, uh, there are differences of opinions from people, but if people want to volunteer for a committee because we don't get overloaded with volunteers for committees, I'd much rather see a person be involved than stand on the sideline throwing.
I agree, but I think they wanted a voice.
Out there.
I'm sorry. I, I agree, but how I read the emails, that he, they, they wanted more of a voice in, in, in this decision. I, I guess two of you are here. Am I looking?
The mayor is here.
Um, his name's not on here.
No, but he's the mayor.
Um, Mr. Oger, do you, in, in your, are you Mrs. Zimmerman?
So I'm Kathy Zimmerman.
Yeah, I met you once. Do you guys, can you guys come up? Do you guys have an opinion on this? Your names are on here?
No, we just didn't realize that we had to actually apply and someone could yay or neys. We thought you asked for two people, we're giving you two people, and that would have been the end of it. And then we find that we have to fill out an application if we approve by all of you. We just were a little, I don't want to, I don't know if the right word is offended, but we were a little bit like, what do you, we're sending you two representatives to say thank you.
We are, thank you. We definitely are, thank you. Um, I mean, did you have something to say?
Yeah. Commissioner Wiltse and, um, the, um, city manager, John Donzer, I mean, have you collaborated together? Because I mean, it is county and city about, about these names?
Um, I haven't personally sat down with John. I mean, we've had, um, emails for months now since I've been involved with the housing through the state. Um, you know, I'm on the EDC with Yvonne, and she's, you know, big, big player in, in that game in this area. So we've had, uh, communications regarding trying to do something like this, and then Tim got brought into the picture on, on some of the communications, then it got to this. And I think there was a little misunderstanding, and I have talked to a few people since that, and I, I think after the email was sent out, I think Tim defined everything pretty clearly, and I believe John responded, right? And he felt.
I didn't see a response from John.
Oh, John didn't respond?
No. Yvonne, do you have something?
John's fine. John's fine with it, the way, John's fine.
Yvonne, did you have something?
So I can tell you that the two people from Oklahoma Township, Dennis Stevens, the supervisor, those were the two people that he recommended. And that would be me, myself, and Nancy Tyree. And then I know for the city, John wanted to be on it, and he asked him to be on it. I went to the West Branch Township, um, meeting with Tim's blessing, um, to talk to them about it because they, they hadn't been a part of the housing discussions that had been going on between the city and the township. We've been very closely working on this. And they did not make any type of decision at the meeting that I knew of. I had talked to Bob Griffin Jr. because of his background. Um, so they were aware and talked about contacting Bob. And that's all I know.
Mr. Simmons.
Are you and, um, Mr. Donzer in, in on this together? I mean, how did this initially start? Just with you or with Mr. Donzer?
Um, it, it basically started, uh, you know, me being on the EDC and housing, getting to know Yvonne, getting to know Penny, being on the Michigan Housing Coalition, and then becoming on the steering committee, being involved with that, you know, through the Michigan program, which we're still waiting to hear a lot of information on. And then just, you know, being in touch with these people that really feel that obviously know the need for housing here and that are involved with it. You know, they're already key players in it. Uh, but no, I've never sat down and like directly talked with John just regarding housing. But again, we've had, we've had communications as a group of, you know, wanting to do this and move this forward. And then, like I said, then we brought Tim into the picture so we could kind of see how that process is. And I think that's kind of where maybe some of the confusion then, then started.
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
Did this, um, did this email you received come from Mr. Donzer?
What email? We all received it.
And he wanted more input? Is that what you're saying?
Um, that's kind of what I, I read out of it. There was definitely some misunderstanding. They thought they would have more, more say or control over this, uh, uh, how I read it. Um, advisory committee, um, which it does involve these three. They, they didn't realize that it had to come through the Board of Commissioners, which I don't know if it necessarily had to, but I think we're trying to follow policies and procedures and
Right.
do things correctly. Um, his, his email was pretty straightforward. Um, I didn't talk to him. I just read the communication that was presented to us all.
Commissioner David, um, appeared maybe Yvonne had something more. Does, do you have some more input to put on this?
Yep, I, I seen her. I was letting Commissioner Simmons finish. Hang on. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Simmons? Read it? Okay, go ahead.
So John and I did discuss after the emails went back and forth. And he said he was good with everything, that he wanted us to try and move forward and see what we could do with that.
Okay, he's done, he's good with all of these names.
He didn't say that. He said he was good with how you were doing it.
And, did you have input? My good golly.
Let me see right here.
Obviously, we want this to be successful.
Correct.
I mean,
Everybody does.
And everybody wants an input on it. This is extremely important, and I respect that.
So miscommunication, the misunderstanding from the city council is that we were appointing members to a joint committee, not recommending people to come and be a part of the board or the county type of thing. We thought we were appointing, and that was it type of scenario. So we would have.
Through the city.
Through the city.
Okay.
And that they would be coming back from this advisory board to recommend different things that this advisory board brainstorms and comes up. So we felt that each one of the three municipalities that were coming to join the county to have this joint committee was going to assign their members, that would be done. Tim sent his explanation to a question that was posed by John and myself. It explained that, no, we're just recommending. Well, I don't know fully that we have two of the three represented, Oklahoma Township and West Branch here tonight, but are there truly representatives of those municipalities? Are going to go back and brief them, or that's where the, the downfall of the miscommunication came to. We thought when we made the vote, we were appointing them to it. Last Monday, after we received the response from Tim, we clarified, and everybody's good with moving forward. We see the value of it and everything else, but we thought it was a different process. So now you do have this group, and two of the three are represented here tonight, saying, yes, these are the people that came as a recommendation. Is this truly a recommendation for each of the municipalities so that we have that open communication? When they make a decision or an opportunity poses itself for one of the municipalities to apply for something, they're going to go back and talk to those boards to further those decisions. So that's kind of, I hope that provides a little bit of clarity.
Yeah, go ahead.
What mu, what municipality is not re, was not represented in the choice here?
West Branch Township, those, they're not here this evening.
Correct.
Yeah. So that would be my only question, because that was my understanding when we voted the, the first time and asked Kathy and John to be a part of it. So when we got the response, I wanted to make sure that Kathy and John understood. We're just recommending you now based on what was explained to us. You will be appointed into committee. We can still recognize our member coming back because we know who they are, but do we have true representation from the municipalities?
I, before I move forward with this, I guess I would like to hear from somebody from West Branch Township to make sure that they are on board with this as well.
Thank you. Well, I, you know, this is a good group of people, and I think that if somebody's, somebody's, once they meet, there's somebody's going to be put in charge. Yeah, and it's going to be a, a, a conscious separate between the eight people, and I think if, if that chairperson comes back to us and says, well, West Branch Township isn't getting notified, I, I think Mr. Griffin's going to notify Township. He's, he's involved in Township. He's involved in the DDA. He's involved. I, I don't see why Bob would not be uh, reporting to the Township. And I think that the other members of the committee, Yvonne's already talked with them. I think the other committees members say, Bob, would you take this back to the Town?
I think the other committees members say, Bob, would you take this back to the township? He's gonna take it back to the township. This isn't, this isn't that, this isn't secret stuff here. Um, if there's a member on the board that doesn't seem to get along with everybody, I'm not mentioning Yvonne. But, you know, but I think the chairman, the chairman should report to the commissioners and say, hey, we're having a problem with a certain person on the board. We'd like him removed, okay? And we can do that because we set up the committee.
I guess I'm gonna ask you again, Yvonne, do you have had conversation with West Branch Township?
I have and I had, I had a personal conversation with um, Bob Griffin. Because I wanted him on the committee. And said, I'm not sure I should be on it. I'd like to be a part of it. I'd like to know what's going on and, and. Help do what needs to be done as long as it's not a conflict. We know that Bob owns property and he kind of does his own thing also. But I don't think that's a conflict either. There are, we are. We're doing this so that we can build homes so that people can live in them.
It's definitely a need here. We just want to make sure that everybody's good.
And so I requested personally for him to fill out the application and I recorded that to West Branch Township.
So they are aware of this committee?
They, and they discussed the fact, I mean, nobody said we're, we're recommending him. I never stopped, heard a word about it and I know they haven't had a meeting since that time. But they were aware that he was um, that he was filling the application.
Anything else?
And just like with us, if there's a conflict with Mr. Griffin, he can declare a conflict if it has to do with his property or his housing, just like anybody else would, he just wouldn't vote for that. Either he or, or, yeah, you know, he would just declare that. Just like we do. Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Roll call vote. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew. Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Item seventy, resolution to approve an agreement for RV Park Management Services. This resolution is sponsored by Parks and Recreation Commission. Caretaker services are needed at the West Branch Secret Campground and RV Park to facilitate operations. The caretaker performs many services in accordance with the policies, procedures and requirements as may be prescribed by the county. In exchange for services, the county allows park caretakers to occupy living quarters located at the RV Park. If approved, the agreement will cover a one-year period from November first, twenty twenty-three to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion um, that we approve the resolution for the agreement for the RV Park Management Services.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiltse, suppo- uh, support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? This is this, uh, our legal team looked over this, this is a contract.
Yeah, they actually um, had looked over a year or two ago, I don't remember, but we've got documentation.
Well, you, you did get it. You didn't get it on your, instead of who didn't have it on the iPad last.
Yeah, I seen it. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes, yes.
Opposed, motion carries item seven F, resolution to alter and extend the fixed separate tax limitation. And to create a county advisory tax limitation committee. This resolution is sponsored by the Committee of the Whole. The Property Tax Limitation Act allows for separate tax limitations. And Ogama County voters to approve such a separate limitation in nineteen seventy. The nineteen seventy separate millage limitations have been substantially reduced by state rollback provisions from the levels approved by Ogama County voters. The Board of Commissioners has the authority to initiate a, a review and vote of the electorate, electorate. As to appropriateness of altering the current fixed millage limitations. Upon resolving to alter or extend the millage, the fixed millage limitation, limitation. The board must notify persons and bodies having appointed powers of the resolution. So that a county advisory tax limitation committee can be created to review and provide a recommendation as to the county fixed millage limitation. Approval of the resolution will initiate the statutory procedure to consider altering and extending the existing Ogama County fixed mill sec. Separate tax limitation and create an Ogama County Advisory Tax Limitation Committee as required by statute.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons. Uh, Tim, can you, can you elaborate on this?
Yeah, maybe in language is a little easier to understand. Uh, the board, as we discussed at the last, be the whole meeting, uh, would like to sponsor and a resolution. Coming up a little bit later in the meeting would notify the clerk that we would like to put a heavily override question on the ballot. This uh, question is a bit more complicated than the typical millage requests and things of this nature. And that there are a couple of statutes we have to touch base on. One of them is this Property Tax Limitation Act that requires this committee to be formed and meet within ten days of being formed. To look over the language that you would then subsequently approve at your next regular meeting. Can you put the headly override question on the ballot? The. Real head scratcher about all this is the statute is pretty explicit about what the language has to say. So it's not like there's much room to change any wording at all. It's, it's gonna be pretty straightforward. But the Property Tax Limitation Act requires this group of six to get together, look at that language and say, yes, this is the language. And then forward that to you with their recommendation to move forward. This committee would consist of six people um, named right in the statute. One would be the county treasurer, the second would be the chairperson of our claims and accounts committee for this quarter. That would be Commissioner Scott. The intermediate school district superintendent, uh, Mr. Petrie, who was here a couple of months ago. A resident of a municipality selected by the probate court judge of the county. So Judge Williams would have a, a person that he would appoint. Uh, and one member who's not officially connected or employed by any local unit of government. Would be selected by the Board of Commissioners. There was actually an application that came in just prior to the start of the meeting that I just sent to you by email. Um, and that, that would be a name that, that you might consider or any other name of somebody who's not connected with local government in any way, shape or form. And then finally, uh, the sixth member would be a township supervisor, uh, selected by a majority of the township supervisors in the county. If you approve this resolution, we will get busy tomorrow, contact the township supervisors and get that person. Uh, that name put forward because again, there is a clock table in this group. It has to meet within ten days. So meaning at some point next week, they would meet. Uh, I already actually talked with the county today, uh, giving them the heads up about, we'll need the resolution put together with the language. Uh, it would be, I think, a very short meeting, under an hour. Once the meeting's concluded and it adjourns, the committee is disbanded. So that's it. It's got one function. Once that function is completed, it disbands. That would then come forward to you in the form of a resolution on February eighth with the language. That would, then you would be requesting the clerk, clerk place, uh, place on the ballot uh, on May seventh.
So all we're voting on today is for this committee to form.
Form the committee and hopefully nominate the fifth member who was not officially connected or employed with any local unit of government.
And this is just for the headly override?
Yes.
Is there still enough time for all, there's still enough time for all of this to happen?
Maybe we'll have met and concluded its business, if my math is right, by next Friday. And then the following Thursday, you have your regular meeting on the eighth. And that's where we'll have the resolution with the language that will go on the ballot that you would then approve and send to the clerk that placed on the May seventh ballot.
Commissioner Wiltse, did you have something?
Um, no.
I'm sorry, I thought you.
No, I.
What, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I do have something to say. Um, I don't know if anybody else found any person that's away from. Uh, that's not connected with government, but the application, uh, I contacted this, this individual. I, I don't think this is a conflict interest. He is the son of my wife's niece, so he's down the ways. But uh, I tried to get him, he lives in the city and I tried to get him involved in the city, something. And I told him, well, this is a one-shot deal. How about, how about this? His wife used to work for the nine-one-one, but no longer does, works for Roscommon nine-one-one. So she does not, there's nothing to do with this that will affect her because she does not work in Ogama County. He's a younger, younger man. He works for McLaren and he's a physical therapist, you know?
Uh, I, I know the family and yes, I know the family that you're talking about.
Okay, but he does call me Uncle Craig, for lack of a better term, but anyway, it's a one-time shot. He's got the time. Unless you guys got somebody else.
Fill out the application.
Yep.
Um, I, I think we obviously have to move forward with this. Not sure exactly if uh. The headly override is, is, I'm, I'm hoping going forward with that is a good strategic move. Um, let the voters vote on it. I'm just really hoping that um, this doesn't backfire. So, anything else to add to that? I don't think this has to be a roll call vote.
Doesn't have to be.
Uh, I guess we'll go ahead and do it. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Who's the person?
Benny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
No.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
No, I don't know this guy.
I don't think.
We're, we're passing the whole resolution.
Okay. Items that. Your vote is no?
Him not voting.
Say that one more time.
Were you talking to Tim or were you voting when you said no?
I was just looking at his name.
This, this is just the resolution.
Correct, we're not.
Okay, yes. Sorry, I misunderstood, sorry.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Uh, item seven, uh, you guys got me all sorts of confused. Item seven G, right? Yes. Resolution to petition the county clerk to place a question to alter or extend the fixed separate tax limitation on May seventh, twenty twenty-four. Ballot. This resolution is sponsored by the Committee of the Whole. Through adoption of the previous resolution, the Board of Commissioners has resolved to initiate the statutory procedure. To consider altering or extending the existing Ogama County fixed mill separate tax limitations of the county. And the townships intermediate school districts in the county. Approval of the resolution formally petitions the county clerk to place a special ballot question altering or extending the existing Ogama County fixed mill. Separate next limitation question on the May seventh, twenty twenty-four ballot before Tuesday, January thirtieth deadline. If approved, ballot wording for the proposal will be discussed at the February first committee of the whole meeting. Wording must be certified and delivered to the county clerk on or before four P M. On Tuesday, February thirteenth.
Would anybody like to entertain a motion to support this?
I'm a, a move that we support the resolution.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Wiltse. Tim, can you, can you explain exactly what we're voting on now?
What this resolution does is provides the clerk the official notice that you would like to have a spot on the ballot. To um, place in this case, the headly override question. This is only uh, uh, you know, notification of the clerk or notice of intent. Uh, it's not the official language. So that's that second step that would have to occur by your February eighth meeting. That's where exact language would be developed. Now you could still at that time say, no, we've had second thoughts. We don't want to do it. But this just reserves your place in line. If you don't do this, then it's, it's over. It won't go on the May seventh uh, ballot.
Alright, so there was some confusion last time that this has happened for this upcoming February election. So this is not saying that we support what's going on. This is just that we're supporting what exactly?
You're supporting, reserving a place on the ballot. Now you can withdraw that support by not putting any language forward at your next meeting, but right now it's just the clerk. Reserve this spot for us. If that's not done at this meeting, then there will be no opportunity to place anything on the May seventh ballot. Uh, concerning this question because we haven't reserved our place.
It's not saying that we support the wording of the millage or anything at this point in time. Is this real? Okay, I just. Again, ag- agreed. There was just a lot of confusion last time, so I want to make sure we're perfectly clear here. Cause I was part of that confusion. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Oh.
Item seven H, resolution to petition the county clerk to place a special millage question for authorization of animal shelter services on May seventh, twenty twenty-four ballot. This resolution is sponsored by the Committee of the Whole. Public funding for animal shelter services in Ogama County has been limited. And contractual agreements for housing of stray dogs. The Board of Commissioners desires to assist in providing a more sanitary, humane and efficient animal care system. And to stabilize operations provided by the private sector. Approval of the resolution formally petitions the county clerk to place a special ballot question for authorization of funding for animal shelter services. On May seventh, twenty twenty-four ballot before the Tuesday, January thirtieth deadline. If approved, ballot wording for the proposal will be discussed at the February first committee of the whole meeting. Wording must be certified and delivered to the county clerk on or before four P M. On Tuesday, February thirteenth.
I'll make a motion.
My support. Motion from Commissioner Wiltse, support from Commissioner Simmons. Um, any further discussion? We had a representation at the Committee of the Whole for this. Um, this was explained. Any further discussion on this? Roll call vote. Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Item uh, seven I, resolution to approve a letter of agreement with police officers, Labor Council, Command Officers Unit. And to appeal resolution twenty-three dash one seven four. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahanny. And art- article sixteen, section sixteen of the collective bargaining agreement between Ogama County, County. Ogama County Sheriff and the Police Officers Labor Council, Command Officers Unit sets forth retirement benefits for eligible unit members. A recent review of retirement documents found that two union members were not properly enrolled for retirement benefits. Approval of the resolution will authorize execution of a letter of understanding with the unit, unit to properly assign current members. To the defined benefit retirement division and to subs- subsequently close that division to new members. This action will also appeal an earlier version of the letter of agreement included in resolution twenty-three dash one seven four.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons. I think this has been discussed and this is just putting a man or two rest, so it cannot come up again, correct?
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item eight, claims. We had claims.
Jay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, meeting schedule, right?
Yeah, well.
I apologize.
But after we talked about it before and I started thinking about it, I still like the idea of at least one committee is a whole meeting during the daytime. Um, I would not be opposed if you wanted all the other meetings, the other three meetings in the month to be in the eve- in the evening. Um, I'm just bringing that up for conversation. And then uh, in, in addition to that. The meeting, the evening meetings used to be seven o'clock. And we changed them just a couple of terms ago because a couple, like you were working closer to town. And so was Brad Newbecker at that time. And the problem you guys had was you didn't want to go home, then turn around and come all the way back. So to help you out, we, we, we closed off a little bit. I would not be opposed to a six or six-thirty meeting if that would help the members. I gotta think like Roger, you, you gotta leave early from work to come to a five-thirty meeting. In the summer months, would it help you a little bit later?
It ain't gonna make no difference.
No, okay.
The five-thirty works for you? Huh?
Does it work for you?
It does, when it's not, I apologize, when it's not foggy. Again, my commute, my, my, my situation did change. So um, since the comments were made that we knew what we were taking on when we took it on, yes, but some circumstances have also changed. Um, my office changed locations, so I, I do have a little bit of a commute to get here now. Um, so the, the evening meetings work, worked much better for myself and um. But they, they, they truly do, so I do appreciate that support. Um, I think we, we tried to give a little give and bumped our meetings up to eight A M. Versus the nine A M. So it's not half a day. Um, so you're, you're proposing five-thirty, three meetings and one morning meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying that the one morning meeting allows, because the regular meeting, like. The second meeting in the month, the regular meeting, we don't invite guests to the table. We usually just act on it, on the, on the business that we've already talked about. So like, we can do that in the afternoon.
So what meeting were you thinking about keeping in the morning?
Just the first one of the month.
First committee of the whole?
Yeah.
What's your guys' thoughts?
It makes it simple.
It's um, it's fine with me. It just, you know, I don't know. Everybody else feels about it, but.
We can always re- re- uh, visit it if, if we're noticing attendance is down or um, again with, with, with uh, um. I can't think. The, the technology that we have now, people can, can, can log in right from home.
Five thirty, five thirty in the evening right now is what we're talking about. Yeah, that's fine with me. Three meetings.
How do you feel?
I was fine.
Evening's worked better for you, correct? You're, oh, you work during the day.
Yep.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Uh, I like two mornings and two evenings where we have it.
So I, I'm in favor of the, the evenings. So do we need a roll call vote on that or what?
Need a motion in a second and then whether you do a roll call or not, you, it's up to you.
I'll make the motion to, uh, change the meeting schedule to five thirty P M. Three meetings and, and the first committee of the whole. The first Thursday of the month to keep that at nine A M. Did you want nine, Commissioner Scott?
I, I, I don't know. Can I make a comment on that?
Go ahead.
I'm pretty sure I know where this is going. I'd like to still stay at the eight o'clock. I mean.
That's perfectly fine.
Changing back and forth, yo going again.
That's fine. And the clerk who is required to be at these meetings, M and M, or no?
I don't think you're required. I think we talked about that last time. Um, can't they join by Zoom?
I'm not doing it by Zoom.
That wasn't my question. My question was they can join by Zoom, correct?
Anybody can join by Zoom, uh. I don't know what what's, what's being asked here really, I didn't.
Is it a requirement for somebody to be present? I, I had a motion. I didn't quite.
I'm exactly sure. Of course, our attorney is on Zoom and might be able to answer that question. I don't know if the clerk has to be here live or not. I do know the clerk has to take the minutes um, or the clerk's representative. Uh, but beyond that, I, I don't know if that person has to be live.
Dan, can you answer that question?
She'll make the talk if she's not live.
And hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
I have definitely seen it before where the clerk isn't present and takes the minutes. Um, I mean, you, you sort of asked me a question out of the blue and I've never researched that before. But, um, I, I'm just stating that I've definitely seen them.
Can, okay, so I'm gonna finish my motion, uh, for three, three meetings a month at five thirty and the, um, first committee of the whole meeting to be at, uh, eight A M.
I have one more column.
I have a motion on the, I'm looking for support. And then we'll open it for discussion. Is there any support on that? Did you hear it?
That wasn't him either.
Three, so we got four meetings a month.
Yep.
I have a motion on the floor for three of the meetings to be at five thirty P M. And the first committee of the whole at eight A M. So one eight o'clock morning, the other three at five thirty P M.
Okay.
Do I have support on that motion?
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna open for discussion. Commissioner Wiltie?
I just said to your, um, the clerk asked if she had an opinion. I'd like to hear her opinion.
Go ahead.
Just scheduling purposes. I that's three Thursdays a month at night. That interferes with other schedules with me, but I know other department heads and elected officials like how it is. Because we can participate in the morning. You can't always participate at night.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David. Yes. Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie?
No.
Brenda Simmons? No. Craig Scott?
To bring this.
You're it.
I bring this all up, huh? Well, I'll tell you what, I know I brought it up. I'm gonna vote no, just to I've listened to both sides. I'll, I'll just vote no. And we, we already, we already said it. That's fine. I brought it for discussion.
Item eight claims. We have claims in a total of one hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and eighty-six twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll support.
Discussion, who reviewed minute, who reviewed claims?
Uh, I did and I think Brenda, did you?
Commissioner Simmons did, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Scott did.
Yes, uh, I, I, I looked them over. Um, they, they were not way out of proportion. There is one thing, uh, I, I'd like to bring up probably, probably I'll, I'll bring it up now. Anyway, we, we pay, we pay for inmates to wear tethers. I think it'd be, I think it'd be something that that they paid for the cost of it. It's eight dollars a day. Yeah, and we're paying, we're paying for this and, and I, I think counties should get reimbursed for it. It's only eight dollars a day.
So what happens currently?
We just pay for it.
The county pays for it?
Yeah. Well, am I correct, Sheriff?
We talked about that in LA meetings.
No, we haven't.
Look this way once, will you?
Oh, yeah, we can. We can.
Pardon me? Go ahead, Commissioner Simmons.
Okay, uh, uh, these tethers, I mean, people who are out, out there have tethers on it. They're just out walking around. They have to pay for it. Why would not the inmates have to? Are you talking about inmates that are in the jail have to wear these tethers?
Let, let me research that and I'll get back with Ellie.
They're out of jail, right?
They're out of.
On a tether.
What, what was the claims total? Since this is under claims, what was the total this month? Was there a bill in there? Was there?
Let me see. Yes, yes.
Okay, so what was it?
Well, let me go to it.
Do you recall?
No, I, just a minute, just a minute, just a minute.
Tether. Seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Comment. Go ahead.
Seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
My comment is anybody that's out pays for their tether. They did in the past and I know that for a fact.
How often are we getting billed for this? I, I guess I don't recall seeing that on claims. Is this? Do you have any information on it, Tim?
I don't. I mean, if you're like the sheriff, I'd have to look at it and I could tell you. I'm sure there's some consistency to it.
Can we do some research on that and put it on the committee of the whole?
Oh, yeah.
That's definitely, I think we, we should have information on that.
And we have, uh, next Thursday, we have a law enforcement meeting and the sheriff offered to, uh, on his end to also look into it, so.
That's fine.
Are you good with that, Commissioner Scott?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm just making a note of it.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Claims, did you have?
I just thought they did pay for them. I did not know they were not doing more because they, in the past, they had paid for them. Wearing those tethers, walking around society.
Well, according, according to the, um, the registered, it's, uh, December service. Um, I don't basically, for the, it's a general budget, isn't it?
Did you have anything else in claims that you wanted to talk about?
We got a
No, there were some high bills, but you know, I grow patrol, I had uniforms and Motorola, so I'm putting a vehicle on. And they have that vehicle that was, had a collision. So that, that's what took that, um, price up there. And, um, transit had truck parts, propane and stuff and the treasurer has a lot of posters for title searches. And those were, those are the big ones, but they're just normal this time of year. So I have no questions with, with the, uh, with the claims at all. Just that there were a couple of big ones and they're justified.
Commissioner Scott, anything else to add to that?
No.
Roll call vote. Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Unfinished business?
From Sheriff, I said, under unfinished, have you go back and read this at the tax limitation committee, if you would be so kind as to appoint a member that we've got ten days to get this meeting convened and wrapped up. So, um, you know, I would greatly appreciate it if you could do that.
So how exactly do we go about this?
Uh, just a motion to appoint, uh, an individual. There, there's the one that I just sent to you on the email uh, that Commissioner Scott had mentioned, but it's really open to anybody who's not connected with local government. That's, that's the only requirement.
So I just, I, actually I'm just looking at this. We got it this email at five thirty. Is this the email you're talking about? So obviously I've not had an, uh, opportunity to look at it. I, this is the one you were talking about.
Yeah, well, like, when we get the email for the whole thing, the whole idea, that was just a couple of days ago.
Couple of days ago.
Right? And so, you know, we didn't have a meeting to say to poll everybody to see if anybody had anybody. So I just took it upon myself to kind of find somebody. And that's why I asked, did anybody else find anybody? Well, no one has. Um, I, I'm, I'm just reaching for straws here. I mean, have we got? Uh, I'm I'm not passing the headly thing. I'm just trying to fulfill all the steps to take to, to ask the people.
Can you pronounce this name? So we're.
DeAndre Testard.
Didn't want to, I didn't want to say, state that wrong.
So I make a motion that we accept Andre Testard.
As? Yep.
As a member of. As a member of this tax. Um.
The tax limitation.
Tax limitation committee.
If we have a motion, Commissioner Wiltie?
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. Nope. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes. Roger Mahew.
Yep.
Item ten administrator slash controller report.
We've got the written report in the file folder. Two things though to just kind of remind you of. At the meeting next week, February first, it's the eight o'clock meeting, uh, the representatives from the Isabella County Material Management Planning Team are going to be here to talk about their idea of a twelfth county regional approach to the material management planning. Uh, we do have until July to let the state know if we intend to do it ourselves, to go with this group, to go with another group, whatever. I'm not, um, yet aware of any other regional municipality group that's, um, discussing anything along this line. So if we're gonna join a, a larger group, this is probably it, but you definitely want to hear their presentation. Uh, there's some material that will be in the folder for you ahead of time to look over. Uh, gets a little bit more depth about what it is that we're required to and just a quick reminder that any expense associated with this is being paid for through state grants. Uh, all counties are eligible for. If we are able to join up with, uh, another county or group of counties, there is additional funding from the state to do that. Uh, Isabella will go over their program and how they have their own material recovery facility already, uh, in place. It's already taking in, uh, recyclables and, uh, it's, it's up and running. So it's not anything anybody has to create or build. It's, it's already existing. They did just recently, and they say recently, within the last six months, received a nine hundred thousand dollar grant to upgrade their facility, to modernize it. And they're pretty excited about that, but frankly, they need our volume as much as we might need them, uh, to, to help us with the regional plan. So uh, just look forward to that eight o'clock on Thursday. And then, uh, we are also scheduled to have our inmate medical services, uh, vendor interviews. Uh, those are supposed to start at nine o'clock. So we'll have, um, obviously some time in between the two. I hope to get other business done. Uh, then we have two, um, uh, proposals in, so both of those, uh, proposals will be presented to you. You've got the material over the weekend. Uh, you can look over in advance, ask questions, uh, certainly hear their presentations as well. Uh, and so those are, you know, two kind of out of the ordinary things that'll happen next week.
You have on here, um, grievance meeting was held for Teamsters Local two fourteen Corrections Unit Officer. Can you give me an estimated, uh, uh, at this point in time up to this date, how much time you've spent on, uh, preparing, um, meetings for, for related to these grievances, I should.
I probably have a good four hours into it right now, including the meeting. I do have to, uh, write the disposition up, uh, which will be, it's actually due tomorrow. So I'll have that done tomorrow. You'll be copied on the, on the result. But yeah, I mean, it's a matter then of, you know, reading the grievances, going through the contract, looking for, uh, you know, where the grievances fall, uh, having the meeting, going over the comments of those who participated. Um, so yeah, it'll likely be, you know, early tomorrow afternoon. That should be wrapped up and it should be in your inbox.
Any questions for the administrator slash controller?
Well, I, I was involved in that grievance procedures. Yeah, that's, that's part of it. We have to show that through this deposition report. But, uh, so I looked over the other, the other parts of the, his report and it looks, uh, it's very informative.
Which is appreciated.
Um, I see the FOIA requests and it seems to be a topic in just about every report we get. I'm getting FOIA requests.
Seems to be about, uh, about one a week.
Yeah. And those are, I am consuming and a lot of them are getting real time consuming.
Correct. I appreciate this breakdown. Again, anything else for? Um, we are at item, item eleven. Unfortunately, I do have to step out. Um, Commissioner Simmons, you are gonna have to, uh, resume the meeting. Selecting official department head reports.
I hope you see your driveway on the way home. Don't end up with that one.
You're leaving for the duration.
Yes. Item eleven. That's our wrap.
Again. Yep, nice try.
Thank you.
Mr. Official Department Head reports. Treasurer?
You first?
You're first. You're first to last.
Our podium is gone. I don't know where it went to, so I'll just stand here. Um, good evening, Karen Poglowski, your Ogama County Treasurer. On your iPads, you'll find the December cash summary report with your negative cash highlighted for your attention.
Can you say, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry. Could, can you say that number, what that is, please?
Sure. One second, please.
See it's crooked.
It's always crooked.
Here we go.
All right.
I guess I could have.
Can I turn your iPad?
Yeah, but it's gonna turn too, so.
It will?
Yeah.
The negative is one million, four hundred, thirty thousand, five hundred, nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Thanks. Thanks, Tim. I've also included your quarterly investment reports, showing you where your funds are invested, their due dates, the terms, the investment rates. Did you have any question on that? There's also a risk assessment, so you can see your, there's a chart showing you your risk for how the banks are rated. And, um, of course, our Michigan pooled funds are collateralized, so I show you on a risk scale about how your investments lay. I also wanted to mention that we have a signed contract for one of our land bank projects out in Churchill Township. We are just awaiting contract schedule, contractor schedule and the weather to cooperate with us to get that house torn down. Um, we recently had two RFPs that were out. We have reviewed them uh, this week, the board has and have selected two contractors. We're just waiting for the contracts to be drawn up so that we can get those signed and start those two projects. And we also have one more project in the Village of Prescott. We're just waiting for the purchase agreement to be returned. So we'll have four active land bank projects all being paid for with grant funding.
Excellent. I have a comment. I have a comment.
Uh, I appreciate everything you've done with this land bank and brought it back to uh, to a living item, basically, because it was not a living item before.
It was dormant for about a decade.
Yeah, very good. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Simmons.
Um, so comment I want to make in, in any meeting we're at throughout the county, I always try to make a point if we're together for you to try to tell the people what our negative cash flow is. Because that number is
Important.
extremely alarming and that number is, is rising. Um, and again, that's what I was today because a lot of people, I think sometimes forget about that.
Yeah, that's why it's on your iPad every month. And again, it does have ebbs and flows with the tax collection and the flow of money, but usually it's at its worst in the summer and at our fiscal year end, September thirtieth, and we'll be talking about that when the body is presented.
So this, um, I think a cash flow could be worse by summer.
It will be.
Yes, it will be.
It will be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Got it.
Mm-hmm. You're gonna, it fluctuates from
Some people know.
From nearly a million to as much as four million.
Right.
Throughout the year.
Yep.
With our cash flow. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other department heads, officials? County clerk?
Um, yep, Brett Gildner, your Ogama County Clerk. Um, Monday, this coming up Monday, we, my office, myself, um, we're gonna be doing training all day. Monday morning during the day is training for the early voter. Monday morning during the day is training for the early voter workers, the election workers. Um, and then at nighttime, we're doing all of the election day training. Um, there is a article in the newspaper this week about the nine days early, and I guess I just want to really reiterate, if, if you guys hear anybody having questions or anything to do with the election or the nine day earlier, whatever, please direct them to my office, I'm trying to take as much heat, I guess, or pressure off of the township clerks, um, so just direct anybody to me at my office, so I can give the same consistent message to everybody.
So you are the focal point of this election?
Yep.
And have been.
Yep, yep, and I, um, I can announce that for the nine days early, um, Cindy Roseborough is the coordinator under me for that, and she she has years of experience with the election process, um, and she has put together a schedule of the election workers that both of us feel really confident in the experience, the knowledge of everybody that is working there, and then, of course, will be, my office will be there, um, during all those nine days. So if there's any issues or questions or whatever, so, um, I'm excited about the nine day, I, I, the more that we start talking about it, and you know, people call and asking questions, whatever, um, I'm kind of excited just to, to do this for the first time, because I it, it could really, like, in the newspaper, it could really relieve some of the lines at the township precincts on election day, um, especially the bigger ones, but it's like everything, it's the first time, and I'm sure we're not gonna get it perfect, but we're doing our best to keep the integrity of the elections in line, and excited about it.
Uh, thank you very much.
Hey, hey, Brenda.
Sheriff Gilbert, yes.
I, I don't have anything prepared, but I would like to um, thank, or, you want me to get up or?
Yes. Please.
Oh, sure. I'm sitting there just thinking about it, I would like to thank um, everyone at the transit, all our drivers and dispatchers, um, that got us through on these bad roads since that big storm, because it was a bugger, you all know what those roads were like. Slowed us up a little bit, but we had no issues. But we got stuck, no accidents, no nothing, and, and I'm proud of them all for doing that, and, and I just thought I tried to get the word out there, because it was, it was a bugger, no doubt.
It's a lot of pressure on them.
Yes, it is.
Absolutely.
And they all got through it very well, so I, I, I thank them, and now, like I said, I'm proud of them. Um, other than that, do you have any questions for me?
No, you and Tim are working together, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, um, I wanted to hear the committee report, and also, Tim, um, are we good to go on the, uh, garage door opener?
Uh, yeah. Not yet.
Well, how long do you think it'll be?
I don't know, Ray, it goes on the list with everything else that's gotta come, it's gotta get approved because of the pricing. As you know, it has to be approved by the claims committee as well, so that's gotta be put together and submitted, and once that's done, then you're ready to go.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, Sheriff Gilbert?
I don't have anything.
Any other elected officials? Okay, we have any matters from the floor?
Down here.
We don't have any motions for adoption, do we? No motions for adoption. Commissioners report, um, I see where it says here, Transit Committee meeting notes, uh, Commissioner Wiltsey and Commissioner Simmons. Mr. Wiltsey probably has more detail on this than I do, but we talked about the fees again. Uh, cause there were some questions last time, and that's still a work in pro, in progress right now. And, uh, we also talked about, um, I have it written down here someplace too, but that was one of them, oh, I know, we talked about the advertising on the buses also, that's moving right along. So, Mr. Wiltsey, I'm sure he has the, uh, details on all that, but those are the two things that I got out of the meeting that we had last time was, uh, the fees and, um, the advertising on the transit buses, Mr. Wiltsey.
Um, yeah, I mean, the fees have been a topic now, we've had for, I think it's probably been about six weeks, I know there's been some concerns with the commissioners, and I think we're, we're at a point now where I think we can answer all those questions, and we can move this forward, so I get it's gonna be a good move, uh, to get this going sooner than later. Um, to wrap the buses, we have a, a company that, uh, wants to get involved with us, uh, using uh, local businesses, um, using, for example, like, if the fairground would wanna get involved to advertise on one of our buses, he would basically wrap the bus, um, therefore, it helps, you know, helps kinda keep the bus, um, obviously gives it a little better look, a little more attractive to our, our residents, it catches their eyes. You know, maybe they see something they like, then they'll, of course, go to that community event, or maybe it'll make them wanna ride the bus, or try the bus. Uh, so we, we're, we think it's gonna be a win-win there, um, we're also gonna get some radio advertisement for the transit out of that, which is definitely a good deal. Um, so we're looking forward to moving that forward, um. You know, one big item that we're also working on is, as you guys know, we are getting ready for an assistant director position, and I don't know, Ray, do you wanna speak anymore on that right now?
Um, actually, a director position, um, as, as long as we can come to an agreement of some sort.
Okay.
So basically, you don't have to bother with the assistant, just hire a straight-up director and continue on.
So basically, we're at, Ray, Ray has said that instead of looking for an assistant director, he, he's ready, um, we have some processes we gotta figure out, and Tim's gonna be a part of that, but we will be looking for a new director of the transit, we're working on getting that all together, and we'll put that out. Um, so that is an item that will be, you know, we'll, we'll be discussing more. Other than that, um, Transit Cold Storage Building, that's, uh, you know, under construction. Of course, it's been slowed up a little bit due to, uh, the severe winter weather. Uh, but we have got a number of items fixed out there, uh, which has been good, and we, we have a few more items, one being what Ray brought up, garage doors to get fixed sooner than later. Um, pretty much, when it comes to transit, that's kinda where, where we're at right now, we discussed the millages and strategy and stuff for, for our millages. Um, I think that pretty much covers what we went over last week.
We couldn't cover it.
Any other commissioner report, Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Scott?
I, uh, I wasn't able to attend the last week's, uh, road commissioner, uh, airport meeting, it was frozen pipe Wednesday, so I had some things to attend to. I was able to get to the West Branch City Council meeting on Monday night. Uh, our state representative, Hoadley, was there, gave us a little rundown on what's happening at the state level. Didn't, was pretty brief, that was good. Uh, the auditor's report came back for the city. Twelve million dollar budget that mayor
Sounds about right.
Right, right around that. One point eight million dollar fund balance. Their unfunded liability, fifty-six percent, wow, that's pretty, pretty good. I think we're much higher than that, aren't we?
Depends on which way you're, you're asking.
Which way you're looking, yeah.
We're eighty percent funded, and the last report is going to be less than that.
Okay.
It's coming.
It looked pretty good. They, uh, they had some rezoning issues that they, uh, they've talked about, and, uh, pretty good meeting. Um, so I, I didn't have, and then also Ogama Township, I missed last week too, that was on frozen pipe Wednesday too, so, um, that's, that's basically what I got so far for this meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayhew?
That was at Rose City, they got a, the gazebo's pretty much out, with a splash pad. We got America, quit, and we got a man go town or something, but that's Jeremy Card. You got no clerk. So they got quite a stir up over there.
They have no clerk?
They got no one.
One new one.
Uh, I went to a clocking on the CWD deal, and, uh, the DNR put their, um, representation on, and they handed it over to the USDA to take care of. The DNR is still gonna test the, the heads and stuff of the deer, but the USDA is gonna collect them. I was at West Branch. They're talking about getting their own deputy. Was one of the big things they were talking about there. So, that's pretty much what I was at.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wiltsey?
Uh, this meeting, usually, I have most of my committees already done and reported at the last one, um, this past Monday, had MSU Extension Zoom meeting. Um, always nice to see the things that they're doing in our community for each alone, but yet also, there's also other, uh, um, out, bordering counties that are on that phone call. And, uh, you know, MSU Extension really does a lot of things that people don't even know about, um, and a lot of just really good things for the community. Uh, so our next meeting will be in person, which I look forward to those, or always go somewhere, uh, pretty cool, like, we'll go to a school that's doing special things for growing different vegetables and stuff for the students and stuff like that, so I always look forward to that. But MSU Extension, um, was this past Monday, and, uh, EDC was last week, um, there's some possibly pretty exciting stuff going on in the area with some, some possible investors that, uh, have really come to the table with some things, it's just right now, kind of, uh, you know, early stages, so I, I can't really say too much right now, but it could turn into some real big things and some, uh, offering some really uh, great things for our community residents here out of West Branch. So hopefully, we'll be able to, uh, know more about that and be able to talk more about that in the future, uh, sooner than later, um. Other, other than that, uh, pretty much, again, I reported almost everything at the last meeting.
Thank you. I have one on the, uh, airport. Uh, we have, um, a grant that's gonna be paying for the repairs of the runways at the airport. But because it came so late, uh, most contractors are already scheduled for this coming summer, for their, their big projects. So we anticipate the runway repair will probably be not until twenty twenty-five. So, instead of this year twenty twenty-four, because of the lateness of the approvals of everything. So, just to let everybody know that.
Commissioner Simmons, if you're done, I, I've got one item, I forgot, um, so EMS, serve on the EMS board, uh, you know, we have a new director that's been out there for a while, uh, Justin Rogers, doing a really good job, Paul's the chairman of, of the board. Um, Justin's really, uh, really done some good things leadership-wise out there, and we're really happy to see the direction that, that the, the EMS is heading. Uh, currently, uh, we had some negotiations with the union just regarding retirement for new employees. So we're, uh, we're moving forward with, uh, with those negotiations. Um, one big thing that we've really stressed is a board, um, overtime is, is a big, big killer in, in that industry. Um, and, uh, we're just, for us, it's something that we're, we're discussing a lot, we're real consistent with those discussions. And, um, Justin and, and Nick Vaughn out there, really trying to do the best they can to help with these overtime costs that, uh, really are a, a big, big part of, uh, the budget, so they're working hard up there, got a good group of people, um, and, uh, it's, it's going in a good direction.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? No public comment.
Motion to adjourn.
I need a support?
Support.
On favor?
All right.
All right.
Getting adjourned at?
Six fifty-five?
Yes.
Eighteen fifty-five?
There you go. But you never have to worry about six in the morning or six.
That's right, that's right, when you wake up in the car, it's dark, you know, what, if it's night or morning.